No, I didn't. I didn't say that. Well, good evening. It's at that time that we need to begin the meeting. This is the consolidated agenda for the City Council meeting, the Buenos sanitation District, and also the Community Development Commission. And we'd like to welcome you out tonight, and we'll ask the city clerk now to call the roll.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
Okay, and we are very pleased to have with us tonight the youth director Kelly Perez of Oak Hills Church, and she's going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, so if you'd all please stand, and then if you'd please remain standing for the invocation.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Awesome God, thank you for today. We take this time to pause and thank you. We thank you for the beautiful city of Vista that we are blessed to live in. We thank you for the leaders in this community. Please bless them and guide them as they govern over the city of Vista. We thank you for your abundant blessings. We thank you for life and for family and friends to share it with. Oh, awesome God, as we go on to the business at hand, please give us pure and gracious, understanding hearts, and give us a love like yours for our neighbors, our city, and our world. Amen.
Amen. Well, thank you very much. I believe that's your first time that you've been here to do that for us, and we really appreciate it, and we hope that you come back often. Okay, the next thing on the agenda would be the approval of the agenda itself. Is there anything to add or delete from the agenda?
There are no additions or deletions, Mayor.
Okay, we did not hold a closed session prior to this meeting, so we'll go right into proclamations. So we have two proclamations that we're going to be issuing this evening. The first one is a proclamation for Les Jantsch. So Mr. Jantsch, if you'd please join me at the podium. This really gives me a great deal of pleasure to present this proclamation this evening. I've known Les for a number of years, and he's been very active in the community, in a number of organizations, has worked well with the city for a number of years, and it's an honor that's been due for some time, and so we really appreciate this. Now, I'm going to read this proclamation in its entirety, and then everyone will get an idea of why we're doing it, okay? Now, they gave me one with big print, so I can see it. It says, "Whereas Les Jantsch is a longtime resident of Vista and has been active on civic committees for more than 20 years, and a former member of the Beautification and Improvement Commission and the Community Identity Element Committee, he is currently an active participant in the Vista Chamber of Commerce, Vista Chamber of Commerce's Government Affairs Committee. And whereas over five years ago, Les noticed that the northeasterly side of Thibodeau Road between Mar Vista Drive and the corporate city, corporate center was in need of beautification. Since then, Les has spent this time tirelessly working on enhancing this area. Whereas from the beginning of Les's pursuit to beautify Thibodeau Road, there were many obstacles to overcome at every juncture, knowing as he does that the squeaky wheel gets the grease," and I remember that, "Les never once gave up his commitment to see Thibodeau Road improved. Whereas Les contacted and worked with every agency possible to make the beautification of Thibodeau a reality, including the city, the Vista Irrigation District, the San Diego County, Caltrans, the state of California, federal representatives, and any other organization or individual who might help his cause. And whereas when there were challenges in obtaining permission from Caltrans, Les enlisted the help of Senator Mark Wyland to intercede and obtain permission for the city. Whereas Les also worked with the city on the design work for the curb, gutters, and sidewalk, or streetlights, irrigation, and landscaping. And whereas once the design was completed, Les successfully enlisted the South Vista Communities Group to receive donations for the project. He then began soliciting donations by approaching homeowners associations, organizations, and corporations in the South Vista for contributions to the maintenance fund. Whereas as a result of Les's effort and personal financial commitment, a strong partnership was formed between the city of Vista, the Shatter Ridge Owners Association, Caltrans, and the South Vista Communities. A fund has also been established to assure the maintenance of the new landscaping for at least the first year. And whereas the city of Vista is thankful to Les for his personal involvement and extraordinary efforts to, as a citizen activist, to better the community. Whereas the Thibodeau Road beautification project would never have been accomplished without Les's perseverance and dedication. Whereas the Vista City Council offers Les Jantsch its sincere appreciation for his unwavering dedication and efforts in spearheading the beautification efforts of Thibodeau Road. Through his commitment, the project was, has finally come to fruition, and the entrance to the city is now an attractive greenbelt, providing significant improvements in the visual, in visual quality. And now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council hereby proclaim Wednesday, March 10th, which is tomorrow, 2010, as Les Jantsch's Day in the city of Vista. Congratulations. I'd like to present, this is the official proclamation. Now, I want you to go ahead and say a couple of things, and then there's a couple of other people I'd like to call on to, if you have something to say.
I don't have many opportunities to have to bullip, uh, bullpup, but anyway, I would like to say a few words. First off, the credit goes to the city of Vista and the community. You know, I was just a lay of sunum, and it's really appreciated. I've talked to you many times before, and I have strong feelings, and I dug in my computer files, and I found something I probably said before, I'd like to read it, huh? Because it's, I think, the Shatter Ridge area, the city, pretty much agree with. There may be some things that you don't agree with. City council members and city management chart the course of the city, what it is today, what it'll be in the future. To me, council and city officials are not unlike parenthood. Our decisions must be made to ensure the child or the city have the character to grow and be proud members of the community. At times, sacrifices must be made. Subsidies from other government bodies and/or sales tax revenue should not be the sole criteria. The spreader, rock quarries, batch plants, recycling facilities are examples. Anyway, we've gotten this far, may not all agree with that, but I think this is a blueprint for the city. And one of the things that, again, thank you to the city, and everybody should know you can get, catch more flies with honey than you can vinegar.
Thank you. I'd like to ask either Barbara Boyer or Gene Ford to come forward, they wanted to say something, or both of them. No, you stay, you stay right here.
Thank you, Mayor Vance. I'm Barbara Boyer with South Vista Communities. We just want to add our congratulations and our thanks to our friend Les Jantsch, who came to us last year and asked how we could participate in this project. And thanks to an agreement with the city, we are pleased to be in a position to receive funds, which will cover all the landscape costs for this project. And as Mayor Vance said, so far, we have enough for the first year, but don't forget us next year. This is a community effort, and we thank Les very much for his dedication and perseverance, and you've done a good thing tonight by honoring him. Thank you.
Thank you for giving us an opportunity to speak out on a man who's like moss. He grows on you. And I've, I've known Les for more years, and I care, we both belong to the old Bull Pilots Association, we're both survivors of the military. And you're a real representative for this city and this community in the sense that you saw a problem, and you stuck with it through our thick and your thin. Thank you very much. You know, in this position with the city council, and we often get a lot of people who maybe come forward and are very negative and want the city to do something for them, and it's refreshing to see someone really take it upon themselves to see something done for the community, and to be really a great part of that community, and so I commend Les for that. It's just so rare that you see that kind of activity in a community that it's really refreshing, and I hope that it is a pattern for what we can expect in the future from many of our citizens. We have a lot of good citizens in this, in the community that do provide, but I think that to do as Les has done, to provide something and to provide the funding for it and to make the community a better place, is really to be commended, and I really thank him for that. Any other members of council, say it.
Mayor, thank you. I've had the pleasure of working for Les for a number of years, and as you just said, there are many people who will come and complain about something but not be constructive in their approach, and Les is true citizen leader, if there ever was one. He's applied his knowledge from business and life, and he's come to us always with positive ideas, and Les, thanks so much for all you've done.
Thank you. Okay, we have one more proclamation. I'd like to ask Jan Jackson to please come forward. Jan is the dean of Extended Learning and Associate Vice President of Community Engagement from Cal State San Marcos. So I've got a proclamation that I'd like to read regarding that, so I'll give you a few moments to respond if you'd like. Okay, it says, "Whereas California State University San Marcos is celebrating its 20th anniversary in 2010, and whereas California State University San Marcos has contributed to the economic growth and success of our region, with nearly 90 percent of its alumni remaining in the region, providing a pool of skilled and talented workers. Whereas 23,000 students have graduated from the university, and 9,700 students are currently enrolled. Whereas the California State University San Marcos students provide over 165,000 hours of community service annually. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim the month of 2010, March, excuse me, the month of March 2010 as California State University San Marcos Month in the city of Vista." And thank you very much. So let me present you with the official proclamation, and then if you'd like to say...
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. Well, on behalf of our president, Karen Haynes, and the entire Cal State community, I'm very pleased to be here this evening to accept this proclamation and to say thank you, Mayor Vance, and the city of Vista, for your support for low these 20 years. Some of you may recall that we had our beginnings, our very humble beginnings, in the Jerome's Warehouse in San Marcos, and so from little acorns, mighty oaks do grow, to a 304-acre campus on the hillside that you pass by, many of you, along the 78 every day. And if you haven't been to campus in a while, please do come visit us, because it is, as you say, graduating now, 23,000 students this year, 90 percent who stay right here in our region. There are your children's teachers, there are nurses, there are government workers, our business leaders, and together with communities like Vista, really a powerful economic engine in our region. So many thanks to all of you for your support, and for the next 20 years in advance, thank you for working with Cal State San Marcos. We're very proud to be your public university, and thank you to our community for all the support that you give us. So again, thank you, and thank you for this honor, and to have the whole month Cal State San Marcos Month is truly an honor. So thank you all again very much for this. Thank you.
It's refreshing to see that take place, because a lot of us were involved in the community at the time that Cal State San Marcos, there was a proposal for it to come, a Cal State unit to this North County area, and it was refreshing to see that all the cities in the area got together. They supported the location there in San Marcos and supported the beginnings of that institution, and now it's benefited every one of the communities in North County, and it's really been a pleasure associating with Cal State and those that have been so instrumental in making it one of the premier universities around. So thank you very much. Okay, next we have the consent calendar. I have the request from a citizen to remove item C3. Are there any other items that the council would like to remove? Mr. Gronky?
I'll move for the remainder of this consent calendar.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. If there are no further questions or comments, please cast your votes. Okay, and that passes unanimously. Okay, item C3, which is the NEA Challenge America Fast Track Review Grant.
Would you like a report first, or...
Does a member of the council need a report on this? Maybe just a brief comment about what it's about, so before I call on the individual.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Bill Rawlings, Director of Redevelopment and Housing, and Bill Crane, Management Analyst, has a very short update.
Good evening, Chairman Vance and Commission members. An NEA grant application was submitted by the city in May 2009 for funding to provide two mural in a day projects, which will be overseen by the city's Public Arts Commission. In December 2009, the city was notified of a grant award in the amount of $10,000. The mural in a day projects will likely involve renowned muralists, Mortimer, who will create and sketch an outline of the mural, which will be completed by 10 to 20 volunteer artists from the townsite neighborhood and community at large in a single day. The first mural in a day project will take place in the summer of 2010 at Luz Duran Park. The second mural in a day project will take place in the summer of 2010 in the historic downtown. This concludes staff presentation. We're available to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, we have one individual that'd like to speak. Alejandro Sanchez, would you please come forward?
Mr. Mayor, city council members, good evening. My name is Alejandro Sanchez. I'm a Vista resident. I proudly volunteer in our public schools here in the city of Vista. I'm a presidential person at the school site council, Amurri High School, and other schools. I've been very involved for many, many years, and I'm also a community activist on behalf of the Hispanic community. Tonight, I noticed one thing that I think has really caught my attention, that you guys moved the oral communication item and agenda at last for some reason, and I was wondering why. Are you guys predicated this...
Are you speaking about this item? If you want to speak about oral communications, do it under oral communications.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, please, the reason because I'm saying this is that I wanted to talk on this item, and I noticed that we always have it at the beginning, for community members to come and address the city council members. And now this time, you put it on the end, and I wonder if this is something that you do it on purpose, so you don't want to hear citizens to come forward and address you guys, or what is the main reason why you do this? I don't know.
Mr. Sanchez, if you want to speak about this item, go ahead and speak about it.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, talking about grants, it was, certainly it was a very short presentation that I hear right now. I don't, I don't see any details, I don't see any papers, anything about these grants. They're talking about helping the community, helping townsite. As far as I know, and based on the strong evidence that I have, and that I'm resident there, I lived there in townsite, I know that a lot of people receive some grants, but I don't know what they do it with the grants. Maybe they put them in their pockets, or I don't know what, how they spend it, but as far as I see, I haven't seen nothing really extraordinary, you know, or other extraordinary that really help our community. It's good to have grants, but I think it's good to have quality grants. I think that if the government, I don't even know how these people get those grants, or where these grants come from, because of course they did not give us any explanation, they just took like 20 seconds presentation. It seems like they're never, not very, very professional, in my opinion. I wish that they can have a supportive evidence, and what the plans, and everything, they just only give us 2010, the deadline, and this is what we're gonna do, and who knows if they're gonna finish those project with this kind of money? Maybe they're gonna come back and ask for more money, more grants and everything. So my point is that if indeed we have nonprofits, supposedly nonprofits, or anybody who comes to the city, to our city, or working in the city, and asks for some grants, and they get funded, I wish that they can give us a detail, detailed report where those funds are allocated, and how do they really impact our community. Thank you.
Okay, is there any comments or questions from the council? I'd entertain a motion.
Vote for approval.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in two seconds. Okay, please cast your votes. Okay, and that is passed unanimously. Okay, the next item that we have is under public hearings. This is public hearing number one. It's the Central Vista Business Improvement District, Proposed Assessments. Mr. Kevin Hamm, our Economic Development Director.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Kevin Hamm. I'm the Director of Economic Development, and with me is Rachel Bild, our Economic Development Specialist, and she will be giving the presentation this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. On February 9th, 2010, the city council approved the Central Vista Business Improvement District, CVBID, annual report for fiscal year 2010-2011, and adopted a resolution declaring the city's intent to levy assessments for the CVBID. By law, this public hearing has been properly noticed and scheduled for the consideration of the proposed assessments, which represent no fee increases or boundary changes for the upcoming fiscal year. At this public hearing, the city council will consider all protests against the assessments. If protests from business owners within the district, who will pay 50 percent or more of the proposed assessments, are received, then no further proceedings for the levy of assessments will be taken for a period of one year. If no majority protest exists, the levy of the proposed assessments may be approved through the adoption of Resolution of Confirmation, which is Exhibit 1. As in prior years, staff recommends appointment of the CVBID Advisory Board for 2010-2011 as outlined in Exhibit 2. If the city council approves these resolutions, we will develop an agreement with the Vista Village Business Association for the use of the revenues and matching funds for approval by the city manager. This concludes our report. Staff and the VVBA Executive Director and President are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
This is then a public hearing for an assessment district in the downtown business area, and it's something that has been going on for a number of years. And so the public hearing is now open, and I have requests to speak from two individuals. John Aleesi, would you please come forward, and then following John would be Tom Fleming.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. My name is John Aleesi. I'm the president of the VVBA. I'm a business owner here in Vista. I've been here for 10 years, and I've been associated with the VVBA for eight years. I've gone through four executive directors, and Janet is executive director now. She's doing a great job, and Tom is a former president. Over the years, I've seen a commitment and a very good relationship between the city and the VVBA, and I, over the past few years, I think that relationship has been stronger, and I think we're doing a great job together, and we're making the downtown a better downtown. What we want to do is give our bid members, we want them to be proud of their downtown, and we want them to be proud of their city, and we also want them to get a return on their investment, which are the bid fees. And some of the things that we do, some of the accomplishments that we have done for the downtown area is we've, let's see, we started, or we have the rod run, and it's the 20th rod run. Last year, there was 294 participants. That was up from 270 from 2008. We have these strawberry festivals, which last year was the chocolate festival, and now it's called the strawberry festival. We had 150 vendors. We're a partner, partnership with the Chamber in that festival. We have summer music. We have 50 people per week who come to that, and it's been expanded for six weeks. We have winter fests, tree lighting. More than 300 people attended that last Christmas, with 200 Santa photos were taken. We have Taste of Vista, that's new. We're partnering up with the Chamber for that, and over 200 feet people attended that. We also have another addition, it's the Smoking Classic Barbecue, and we have 30 teams and over 5,000 attendees. We're continuing to work with the city reviewing city sign permits, and we're continuing to work with the planning department with specific Plan 26. We're also continuing to work with the city in reviewing business license and applications, and we're working with the economic development to fill vacancies in the bid area. There's a lot more that I could mention, but those are just a few, and you have a list, and you can look at those, and I just want to say, we appreciate your concern, your help, and everyone on this, on this committee has helped us, and we hope the relationship gets stronger and better over the years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fleming?
Yes, my name's Tom Fleming. I own one day shoe repair in downtown Vista, and as they, was said, I am a past president. You all are aware of so much that we've done together, I mean, so it's not necessary to repeat it. I think the thing that I'm wanting to speak to more than anything else is, the last couple of days, I've heard rumors downtown that we were raising the fees, and the people were concerned, and I wanted to comment on that. There are no fee changes, as y'all are well aware, but more, not for y'all, but for the people of the businesses downtown that might hear that, hear what's being said here or being reported in the newspaper. There's a lot of things that goes on that are not extremely visible. You see the large numbers that turn out for our downtown programs that we have, the street fairs, the rod runs, the things of that nature, and those are things that are obvious, that you can see. What is not obvious is the little things that are done on a daily basis by our executive director, her assistant, and other members of our board, where we go out, they go out and talk to the different businesses, and there are relationships built there. People come to the down, to the, our office to speak to Janet if they have problems, and Janet works as a liaison to the different departments with Kevin and the planning department, a number of different departments, and as far as they've got a question. It's an opportunity for the business to have somebody work on their side, which is what we do. So just briefly, I just wanted to thank the different departments for what they've done, but I want more than anything else for the businesses in the downtown to realize that there's a lot more that we accomplish that they don't see, and there's good things happening in the downtown... And there's good things happening in the downtown Vista, and we just need to keep it going. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Are there any other people that wish to speak on this matter? This is a public hearing, and we are here to hear from you, if you want to speak. Okay, seeing no others, I did want to mention that we did receive three protests, and from which does not constitute enough to change the, or to challenge the assessment district. And those, well, I just mentioned that we did receive three. Mr. Campbell?
Mayor, thank you. I think the two speakers spoke very well as to the relationship with the city, and looking at other business improvement districts throughout the state of California, the ones that work the best are those where there's a proactive leadership within the business community itself, and then a ability to work closely with the cities that they're located in. And I really appreciate the good work that's done by Janet and by the committees that will serve on the BID. And staff, thank you all for making sure that they get their needs tended to in a timely manner, so I appreciate it. I'd be glad to make a motion.
We have one more that has come in. Mr. Gronki?
Yes, thank you. You know, when I came to town in the early 80s, the downtown area was kind of dying, and it's come a long way. And I really want to thank you for everything you've done, because the downtown is now becoming very vibrant and active again, so thank you. Also too, I just want to say, there were three complaints, but how many people are in the bid? Do you have a number on that?
There are 253.
253 businesses that are in the bid at this present time? And we're not asking for any changes to anything?
There are no changes to the fees, the boundaries of the programs.
Okay. Well, you know, you mentioned a number of the activities that you do, and my family and I have enjoyed those for years, going down to see the cars and watching the tree get lit, so I see nothing wrong with this at all. I'll be glad to make a motion on that.
Please, wait, I think we have, Mrs. Ritter wants to speak too.
I would just say, I've seen a lot of growth in the, you know, all the businesses that are attending the meetings and things, because for a while, there weren't as many people involved, and now I see a lot of the merchants there. I'm like the alternate to the, or I'm the alternate to the commission somehow, and so I've been attending their meetings, but I see a lot of growth there, and a lot of interested people, so I think you're doing a lot of, good job down there, and a lot of good things, so I would just like to commend you on that.
Okay, Mr. Piper, did you have a comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I would simply like the record to reflect that Councilman Lopez has excused himself from this meeting because owning a business within the Business Improvement District, he has a statutory conflict of interest and cannot vote on this item.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there any other questions or comments? I too am very pleased with what they've accomplished, and would like to see it continue. And much like anything else, all those that are in the bid area need to contribute, because if one or two opts out, they receive the benefit but aren't responsible for helping to make it happen. So I think it's important that we go ahead and include everyone in the project area, which is mandatory, and I think that it's a good idea. Mr. Campbell, I think you wanted to make the motion first?
I'd like to see us adopt, well, first off, close the public hearing, and adopt City Resolution, next in order, confirming the 210-211 Annual Report for the CVBID, and levying the assessment for the 2010-211 fiscal year, and adopting the next council resolution, appointing the Advisory Board of the Central Business Business Improvement District for the 2010-211 fiscal year.
And Mr. Gronki, you wanted to do it too, so would you like to give the second?
I'll give the second.
Okay, very good. If you'd please all cast your votes. And that passes with four members of the council voting yes. Okay, thank you very much. The next public hearing that we have is public hearing number two. It's an appeal of Planning Commission's approval of Planning Case 8133, Amendment 2, at 1244 North Santa Fe Avenue, which is the ARCO AMPM market, which is the applicant. Mr. Conley?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. John Conley, Community Development Director. Patsy Chow, our City Planner, will be presenting the project.
Patsy Chow, City Planner, the Community Development Department. The item before you this evening is the appeal of the Planning Commission's approval for the proposed ARCO AMPM at 1244 North Santa Fe Avenue. The proposed project is comprised of a request for special use permit amendment and the Comprehensive Sign Program to allow the gas station use, a remodel of the interior and reimagining of the existing footmarked building, as well as reimagining of the existing canopy, converting the existing auto service base into a self-serve drive-through car wash facility, and also allowing beer and wine sales for off-site consumption. On February 2nd, 2010, the Planning Commission approved the gas station use and the associated site improvements, as well as the alcohol sales, beer and wine for off-site consumption. Subsequent to that, an appeal request was submitted on February 9th by a neighbor representing a group of residents known as the Vista Residents for Compatible Development. The appeal is specific to Planning Commission's approval of the beer and wine sales for off-site consumption. Petitions were also submitted to the Planning Commission at the hearing on February 2nd against the alcohol sales at this location, and they were submitted by the Vista Residents for Compatible Development Group. Just briefly, the site is located at the southwest corner of West Indian Rock Road and north Santa Fe, and it is Zoned C1. It is designated Neighborhood Commercial in the general plan. There are commercial uses immediately to the north and east, and the further to the north residential uses to the west, as well as south additional residential single-family uses. On the site plan, basically, in orange is the existing building that would be reimagined to meet ARCO standards, and also accommodate new signage. In blue, we have the self-serve, the proposed car wash facility, that also have reimagining of the existing canopy on the site to accommodate ARCO standards. As far as landscaping is concerned, there would be a replacement of any existing dead or stressed plant materials, and also missing plant materials on the site, and also be some newly proposed landscape plant materials adjacent to the proposed car wash facility. The architectural elevations basically depict the new color, the paint scheme that would meet ARCO standards in terms of their use of earth tone colors. Also proposed new signage, as depicted on this slide. The red, the roof and tile actually would remain, the most of the storefront would remain, with the addition of, one exception would be the addition of the pass-through window, as well as the transparent bi-fold doors at the car wash entrance. As presented to the Planning Commission, here are some of the facts that were used in the analysis that are associated with the request for the alcohol sales for off-site consumption. And although staff is recommending approval of the special use permit for the gas station use, staff cannot recommend approval of the special use permit for the alcohol sales for off-site consumption, because the proposed request per staff's analysis does not meet the necessary findings for granting such permit at this location. The subject site is located in a high crime beat area, 305, where the crime index is at 175.9% of the citywide average. An index that exceeds 120% of the citywide average is known as a high crime beat area. The site is also adjacent to Beat 306 across north Santa Fe on the east side, where the index at that area is 212.1% of the citywide average. Statistical data that has been gathered from the U.S. Department of Justice shows direct correlation between facilities that sell alcohol and an increase in crime. That information was included in the agenda report with additional reference materials. The site is also located inside the redevelopment project area, and the proposed alcohol sales would impede the goals and the objectives of the redevelopment plan by not helping to eliminate conditions that would contribute to blight such as crime. There are several stores that are nearby, located to the project site, that sell beer and wine for off-site consumption, such as CVS Pharmacy, Stater Brothers, Salsa Market. There are two 7-Eleven stores, Royal Liquor and Rancho del Oro Market, which is located immediately across the street from the subject site. The staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution approving the amendment to the special use permit and the Comprehensive Sign Program to allow the gas station use and the associated improvements, and denying the application for the beer and wine sales at 1244 North Santa Fe Avenue. Staff would like to note for the record that we submitted a memo, an add-to packet, where we've added Conditions 36 to Exhibit 1 under Exhibit, I'm sorry, to Exhibit A under Exhibit 1, and Condition 57 pertaining to Exhibit A under Exhibit 7. And that is mainly to address a language to not allow certain commercial uses at this location, being check cashing, smoke shops, and pawn shops, which basically this was done to address and further limit the proliferation of these particular commercial uses within the redevelopment area. As an alternative to the staff's recommendation, the alternative is to adopt the resolution that contains Planning Commission conditions that would approve the alcohol sales for beer and wine for off-site consumption, and that particular alternative resolution is included as Exhibit 7 in the agenda report. This concludes the staff's presentation, and staff's available for any questions you may have at this time. Thank you.
Okay, before we hear from the audience, this is a public hearing, of course, before we hear from the audience, is there anyone that would like to ask questions, or Mr. Campbell?
Two clarifications, if I may, Ms. Chow. Does the car wash extend the size of the building that's present?
Basically, there will be using, there will be some additional extension by 15 feet at the south end of that tunnel, basically to accommodate for additional tunnel space for the car wash.
Okay, because I was out on the site today, and it appeared that would be necessary, but they're maintaining the roof line and the rest of the architectural features?
Correct.
That makes sense. And then the addition that you're requesting for the smoking and the pawn, check cashing, does that relate to the entire center, or just this particular site?
At this particular address, at 1244, just at this particular site.
Not necessarily the entire site?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from council? Okay, as I mentioned before, this is a public hearing, and we have a number of people that wish to speak. The way that I'm going to proceed with this is first, is that we're going to hear from the project applicants, and as I understand it, you have a seven to 10-minute presentation that you'd like to make. Just, I'll get you in just a second. And then after that, we'll hear from those that are appealing, and I understand that the person who is heading the appeal would like to have 10 minutes. Is that all right with the City Council? Okay. And then we'll hear from the other individuals that wish to speak either way. So is it Mr. Fadua? Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Bob Fadua. I'm the engineer of record for this project, representing Mr. Hee Sau with Three Star Management, DVA ARCO. We have a short presentation outline. Geographical features, this project will support the ARCO. We feel that with the 21,000 cars per day, it's a good traffic flow for the site. Needed services, this is the only gas station in the immediate area that will have a car wash. Also, we feel that this would be the best use for this existing facility as a franchised ARCO, rather than independent, which has failed in the past. Most importantly in this project, that it will revitalize the shopping center that has currently a 45% plus vacancy rate, and we have the shopping center representative here to verify that. Our project will create ongoing jobs for local residences, 10 to 15 positions. Estimated sales tax revenue, we estimate 6.5 million a year on this project, and that's revenue that will be kept in the City of Vista. Architectural upgrades, we have upgraded the site plan. We have increased visibility from inside to outside the store with more glazing, more windows. It's a great visibility for security purposes also. We're also proposing five cooler doors versus what you typically have in a liquor store, 20 or so. As the engineer, we're implementing energy efficient designs, LED lighting. We're also meeting with SDG&E to see what the best way is to upgrade this project, implementing stormwater management plans, and a water reclaim system for the car wash. We have upgraded the fuel systems. Again, this is a $1 million investment, not from the landowner, but from Mr. Sau, to upgrade this facility. And with AMPM, we have a higher standard of cleanliness and design with the ARCO Pride Program. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sau to basically, yeah, what's that? Okay, on this ABC license, currently, there's three allowed and two existing, so there would be one available by ARCO for this project, or any other applicant that may come in the future. There's no over-concentration of ABC licenses. There will be no president set by the city in approving this request. There was a 5-0 council vote at the Rancho Vista Chevron a couple of years ago. We have spoken with the sheriff quite a bit to see what the crime reports, and you know, we are concerned with that also. After the 2000 approval, well, prior to the 2000 approval of Rancho Vista Chevron, the 2000 crime was above 120%. In 2008 was 115%. So it was lower after the issuance of the ABC license. So this project approval did not increase the crime. And also, there's no school of churches within 1,000 feet of this facility to affect approvals.
Thank you, council member. Without the ABC license, I will not have the ability to franchise an ARCO AMPM. There's also a project financing that is also tied to the ARCO brand. I'd like to note that beer and wine is less than 1% of total sales for the store typically, and beer and wine is considered a convenience item, and is meant for us to be competitive with other gas stations. My options are Option 1, the City Council approve this project, help ensure success. Option 2 is install an independent brand, which obviously has failed in the past. And Option 3, to leave as an abandoned service station, which would be far worse to the community, and would be unslightly, and would increase crime that way as well. As you can see, I've been an ARCO AMPM franchise for six years. I've operated two successful locations. I think part of the success is that continual maintenance of the site, and you know, continued to provide a good service for the community, and that way we continue to grow our business that way. And I continue to strive to do the same if this project gets opposed. I'll be the independent operator, so I'll be doing the day-to-day operation of the store. Why ARCO AMPM? It's a major brand recognized all around the state, as well in San Diego. It's a low gas price leader, which fits the needs of the neighborhood. It has a very strong franchise support, both for the store and as well for the gasoline. And it also has a very strong crime prevention program, which I'll talk about later. The next few slides will address the main issue, which is the high crime, and what I'm going to do, or what we're going to do, to minimize our impact on crime. We've taken an approach that we've gotten pretty much everybody's input, the city, the sheriff, and obviously from our own experience, and from ARCO's security requirements, so we're going to implement all those. The City of Vista's security requirement, as well as the sheriff's security recommendation brought to us by staff, and working with the sheriff, and also ARCO's own security requirements. We're also implementing an outreach program to alleviate, to help alleviate concerns with the neighbors. the neighbors. The next, this is kind of a busy slide, but basically here's the 12 standard ABC requirement for the City of Vista. I just wanted to note that the last one is the most current one, which requires 90-day training for all new employees at the ABC office, and we're going to implement all that. In addition to that, we are implementing ARCO's security requirements. There's 26 in total, but I'd just like to highlight a few of them. Number 2, which is the enhanced DVR, which is basically, we're going to install 32 cameras, both inside and outside the store, constant monitoring, 24 hours a day. It's going to be a remote viewing, and then also monitors inside the store so we can see what's going on outside the store, which is very important, especially at night. Number 8, beer and wine doors will have automatic door locks controlled by the cashier. We're going to have a timed drop safe. We're going to enhance building canopy and site lighting for extra secure, added security. Proven training techniques and manual provided by BP ARCO. We have, we're going to have a mystery shopper and pride program to continue to beautify the property. And then we're going to also have armored car pickup service so that all our cash deposits will be hauled off in a secure manner. Specifically, the next few slide, I'd like to discuss ways to minimize loitering and deter crime. The facility is going to be open 24 hours a day, so that means there's going to be always a person there. It's going to be never, you know, never any off-hours, so that should provide security for the center and for the surrounding neighbors 24 hours a day, and when police drive by, they're always going to be able to see things because it's going to be well-lit. I think a good point to note is that having a successful business there will draw customers, and the customers are probably the best at policing what's going on in the neighborhood because they themselves know better because they live in the neighborhood. And so, in having constant traffic or good amount of flow of traffic will keep bad people away. There won't be any benches or places for people to hang around, you know, continue to be well-lit. Obviously, force strict operating policies and train and train the staff to be aware and report suspicious activity. No payphone and controlled public access to restrooms. And limited delivery hours from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., cut down on the noise and disturbance after hours. And also, item that's not on the slide is, you know, I've talked to a lot of the citizens in the community because I went around collecting petitions, and I felt that, you know, it's my commitment to have the least amount of impact on crime, and so I'd like to propose a goodwill commitment to the residents that if, in one year, crime stats are higher in the shopping center, that I would continue to do something different, working with the sheriff, to do whatever we can to either keep the stats down or drive it down or keep it from going up. So, I want to make a commitment to all the citizens here and the sheriff, as well as the city, that that's my firm commitment and that I'm going to stick to it.
And in conclusion, the City of Vista Planning Commission has agreed that the benefit to the community outweighed the negative risks associated in the issuance of this ABC license and the approval of this project. Approval of the project will not increase the number of people buying beer and wine that currently, you know, purchase across the street or other nearby locations. The operator has agreed to reduce the beer and wine sales from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And most importantly, I feel that this project will revitalize the North Santa Fe Village Shopping Center and improve the neighborhood.
We feel that it's the best intended use for this now-closed site, best chance of success with the ARCO brand there versus others. We'd, will help attract future tenants and adjacent businesses and therefore increasing land values. I just wanted to also make a note that we did collect 609 petitions, all of which are people in the area, because I walked around the area and with help from the existing tenants, collected those signatures, and I think 90 of which were residences in the immediate area within probably the 500 feet, 1,000 feet radius of the property there. And we also had very strong support from the existing tenants as well. We also, I went out and tried to get a meeting with the applicant, but unfortunately, I wasn't able to get a hold of her. We spoke to the apartment property manager, and she said that she hasn't lived there in quite a few years. I asked the city council to please consider this project based on the merit of the project and all the steps that we have taken to address the high crime and benefits to the community. Planning Commission has voted 6 to 1 acknowledging that this project will be a benefit to the community. I'm asking the city council to do the same. In addition, there is strong community support as seen in our petition. A yes vote would also give us the best chance of success and being open for a long time to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You had two other individuals, Bob Roffler and Sam Sale. Were they going to speak?
Yes.
They're going to speak later?
They can speak later.
Well, were they part of your original presentation, or are they just?
No, they're going to speak.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to put them, if it's all right, if they're not part of your presentation, I'm going to put them separately with the others that are going to speak independently. And then, at this time, we're going to hear from the applicant for the, or the appellant, I should say. So, if that's... Okay, next, we'll hear from Maurice Rosenberg. And Mr. Rosenberg, as I said before, has requested 10 minutes, and so we'll...
I think Maurice would like to go ahead.
Well, she's not given 10, is she a part of your 10 minutes?
I think she could be.
No, is she a part of your 10 minutes?
No, I think she'd like her...
I have three minutes of my own, actually.
All right, well, go ahead and take your three minutes if you want to go first, and then I'll give Mr. Rosenberg the 10. I'm sorry, did you submit a slip to speak?
Yes, I did.
Okay, well, I can't find it, but go ahead. Please. I, it may just be, I may have misplaced, but just please go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, here it is, right here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Good evening, and thank you. I appreciate your time again. I first want to say thank you to the council for taking the time to hear us. I felt after the last meeting that we were a silent minority and unheard, so I thank you again for allowing me this opportunity. Also, I would like to have all the supporters for VRCD to please stand up, those of you that came out to support us, to help us. If you don't mind, quickly, please stand up, the residents of Vista, and those that were, yes, and those that were here. You don't have to support our coming against the mixed-use permit. Thank you. Thank all of you for coming out. I know you have busy schedules. A number of people wanted to come out, but again, their lives, the busy lives, and the short period of time did not allow it. Also, I found out in going out and trying to speak with people that there was a large Hispanic community, and a lot of people couldn't even read the English pamphlets that I was passing out, and they were saying that they didn't receive notices, and some of them received the notices but really did not, were not able to read them. So, that may be a note of recommendation that when those notices go out, you may want to consider sending them out in Spanish as well. We, the concerned citizens, residents of Vista, basically believe that this is just not necessary, nor will it contribute to the general convenience and welfare of the neighborhood and community. I had a very quick analogy, I'm trying to speak quickly. I still get nervous coming up to speak in front of everyone, which is why I enlisted Mo Rosenberg's help, because he's not like me, a person who's going to be emotional. Years ago, I remember reading a scientific, an experiment that was done, and basically it was just, a pot of cold water was put on the stove, and a frog was placed into it, and the fire was put on very low, and some of you may have heard this or read it. And each time they did this experiment, the frog stayed in until it cooked. But, they also had a second pot that they would take the frog, they had the water already heated, and when they would drop the frog into it, it would leap out for its life, so it was saved. And I sensed, there was such a sense of apathy when I was going around talking with people and trying to, wanting, they're like, "Well, we want to do something about it, but no one's going to listen to us." And that's what I was hearing. And I'm saying, "That can't be, that just can't be the case, and I hope it isn't the case." Lots of times, we want something quick, and we don't think of the future, what it, what... Here I am getting emotional, forgive me. If Mr. Sau made a comment that the residents know what would be best for the business, well, if that's, if he really believes that the residents would know what's best, and here we are saying that we don't want, we're pro-business, just not pro-more alcohol, and if he believes we know what's best, this is what we're saying. And we've seen another ARCO station that's doing quite well that does not have a liquor license. So, what we're asking is that our elected representatives stand on the side of VRCD and overturn the planning commission's approval to a special use permit to allow the application of beer and wine sales. And one of the reasons I had to hurry, hurry, hurry and not be on time with everything else I was doing trying to get to more people is because my son was affected and was attacked by a group of young adults who were drunk from behind. And this was, this came after I filed the appeal, which brought it even closer to home. My daughter's here, my two grandchildren are here, and I want to see a positive change, and I'm hoping that you are hearing what I and the residents of Vista are saying. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Maurice, Mo Rosenberg.
Good evening, Mayor Vance, members of Vista Council, Mo Rosenberg, Rosenberg Development Services. With serious concern, Vista residents for compatible development formally objected and appealed that portion of the planning commission decision of February 2nd, 2010, that approved a special use permit to allow the sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption at the proposed ARCO AM PM location at 1244 North Santa Fe Avenue. The residents supported and continue to support city staff's recommended action before you this evening to adopt the draft resolution approving the amendment to the special use permit and comprehensive sign program to allow the gas station, remodel the interior, convert existing and service space to self-serve drive-through car wash facility, and deny the application for beer and wine sales for off-site consumption. Have the photos been distributed?
Yes.
I believe photos have been distributed. So, first of all, I am pleased to provide city council with new pertinent and compelling information regarding the subject matter under consideration tonight. With regard to ARCO's required precondition for permitting the sale of beer and wine in order for the store to be branded as an AM PM franchise, I'd like to point out and apprise the council that contrary to what the applicant and his team told the planning commission, there is an ARCO AM PM brand operating as a gas, selling gas, car wash, and mini-market retailer. The facility is located at 810 Tamarack Avenue, Carlsbad, approximately 4.37 miles from the proposed ARCO AM PM site. I respectfully state for the record that it appears to me, or to the Vista residents for compatible development, that the planning commission was misled by the applicant and his team when they forcefully stated that they were knowledgeable with regard to ARCO's franchise policies and that they did not know of any ARCO AM PM brand franchise being issued at locations that did not sell beer and wine for off-site consumption. We now learn that in fact, this is not the case. The applicant and his team further stated to the Vista Planning Commission that beer and wine are a low-margin item, are low-margin items. sodas, coffee, chips, candy, energy drinks are higher-margin items. Beer and wine sales are a small portion of overall sales, not the traffic generator. ARCO and AM PM franchise are not granted without the entitlement for the sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption. As we now know, that is not true, and in fact, not the case. An ARCO representative at the planning commission hearing stated that the ability to sell beer and wine at the proposed ARCO AM PM location would afford the operator a potential 5% convenience factor in addition to its brand power. Tonight, I believe that number was represented as 1%. Sacrificing safety for such a small competitive advantage does not sound like a good trade-off for the community who will be paying the freight. With regard to the applicant's negative expectations of the mini-marts' business success without the beer and wine sales revenue, we don't think it's a good idea or good policy to grant a special use permit for the sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption when the applicant suggests that the success of the overall business is contingent upon the success of an ancillary use. I am sure the community would welcome and embrace a brand-name retailer at this location, even without the sale of beer and wine. Just because there is an unused ABC Type 20 license in the census tract, it doesn't mean it must be issued for the sake of issuing another alcohol permit in a high-crime area. What is important, what is important and at stake here is the city's criteria for protecting the health, welfare, and safety of its residents, and in particular, the children. The health, welfare, and safety of Vista's citizens cannot and must not be sacrificed for convenience. I believe there's a map which you've already seen showing some of the non-compatible uses. The residents would like to point out the following for council's edification and consideration. The level of crime in the area was graphically illustrated by the city staff in the planning commissions, to the planning commission, in their crime statistics exhibit, which reflected the crime statistics per the Sheriff's Department ABC report for Beats 305 and 306. There are numerous non-compatible uses plotted on the Sheriff's Department beat map showing the two relevant beat areas, 305 and 306, where there is extremely high levels of crime compared to the rest of the City of Vista. There are churches, schools, parks, and trails that are close proximity to the proposed ARCO AM PM. There are vacant lots, parking lots in close proximity. There are two public transit stops in front and across the street from the site. These facility, this will facilitate the city widespread of the adverse impacts from the sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption. Loitering is inevitable, with bus stops in front of the store on both sides of the street. Covered benches exist, even if the franchisee is not going to provide or make it inviting, there is already an inviting environment existing right out the front door. The security requirements that were mentioned, once people buy alcohol and are out the door, it's not the owner's problem, it becomes the community's problem. And appreciate what good businessmen want to do and try to do, but the problem is it's their individuals. And once they're out the door, nothing you can do about it. At the planning commission hearing on the 2nd of February, the city staff reported and verbally reiterated, in Beat 305, the per-crime, the per-share crime analysis reporting indicates a crime incidence of 175.9 of the citywide average. Any index that exceeds 120 of the citywide average constitutes a high-crime beat area. Immediately adjacent to 305 is Beat 306, which is only separated by four lanes of traffic on Santa Fe Avenue, where the per-crime analysis reporting indicates a crime incidence of 212.1 percent of the citywide average. Again, any index that exceeds 120 percent of the citywide average constitutes a high-crime beat area. Staff further stated that the City of Vista has a strict policy not to approve special use permits for the sale of alcohol in areas of the city that have a crime index that exceeds 120 percent of the citywide average. 120% of the citywide average. Also, it was stated that the proposed ARCO AM PM is in an area of the city where there is already an undue concentration of alcohol sales outlets, as well as there being no public convenience or necessity for the issuance of another special use permit allowing the sale of alcohol. Statistical data from the United States Department of Justice shows a direct correlation between the sale of alcoholic beverages and increased crime in a neighborhood. This was also pointed out by the North Coastal Prevention Coalition in their community flyer regarding this hearing, and I quote, "Many research studies have documented the correlation between alcohol availability," that's the concentration of licenses, "and crime." City staff pointed out that the subject site governed by the, is governed by the city redevelopment plan for that area. The primary objective of the plan is to eliminate blight in any conditions that may contribute to blight, such as crime. Therefore, approving the sale of beer and wine in this high-crime area impedes the goals and objectives of the city's redevelopment plan, since it would not contribute to the general welfare and/or the convenience of the neighborhood and its residents. North Coastal Prevention Coalition also pointed out that both national and local student surveys are finding increases in teen alcohol and drug use. Increasing alcohol availability may contribute to youth access to alcohol. All sectors of the community, parent, teen, law enforcement, businesses, and city leaders must do all they can to help prevent underage drinking and help reduce alcohol-related problems. As pointed out by staff and residents themselves, existing retail sales outlets of alcoholic beverages for off-site consumption are plentiful in the vicinity of the subject site, and I'm sure you can see that on the map that's been provided, making the additional sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption redundant, excessive, not necessary, nor warranted. There are seven establishments selling liquor, beer, and wine for off-site consumption within 2,000 feet of the proposed ARCO AM PM location. By now, it should be evident that the proposed ARCO AM PM site will just be another convenience store along a short strip of North Santa Fe Avenue that would be selling alcoholic beverages for off-site consumption. More alcohol availability equals more competition, equals lower prices, higher consumption. Basic economics. Just what isn't wanted or needed in this community. Also, there is the possibility, particularly in this economy, that other businesses that sell alcoholic beverages will be adversely impacted and end up closing. Either way, community ends up with a vacant property. In this market, a six-month vacancy, which is the case here, is not a long time. Look around the city, you'll see much less favorable locations that have been vacant much longer, years in fact. Staff's history of this location and its business ventures demonstrates the fragility of the immediate market. The gas stations that have gone out of business show that the street can barely support the stations there now. It's a lose-lose proposition.
Mr. Rosenberg, are you about that?
I am.
Thank you.
As stated in this formal, pardon me, the community concurs with the city planning staff and asserts that they got it right, as stated in their findings. However, the Planning Commission compromised the city's strict policy when it approved the special use permit for the sale of beer and wine sales for off-site consumption, ignoring staff's crime index analysis exhibit. Consequently, Vista Council cannot consciously justify ratifying the Planning Commission decision to allow beer and wine sales for off-site consumption. As part of the proposed project, when staff has shown that the subject site does not satisfy the findings, the community respectfully requests that the Vista City Council take this opportunity to also get it right and support staff's recommendation and resolution before them tonight. Thank you, staff, council members, for the thorough attention you have given this matter.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have, I said before, a number of individuals. I've allowed extra time for both the applicant and for the appellant at the beginning of the public hearing. I will strictly enforce the three-minute rule on all other speakers. So next would be Bob Roffler.
My name is Bob Roffler, I'm from Temecula, and I've known he for seven years. I'm a franchise business consultant for ARCO. He's done an excellent job for us during those seven years. I've been with him the whole time. He's an honest, hard-working individual that's just done a fantastic job, a very good person and a very good family man. At AM PM, we, having a safe and secure environment is very important to us. So hopefully, all of you have been to AM PM before, I hope. I think one of the things that you're, you've obviously seen when you've come onto our lots are bright canopies, exteriors, great lighting that just pops when you get on those lots for security reasons. So we do have guidelines within the company for lighting, exterior and inside. As you move into the store, you're going to see, as you walk into the store, again, bright lights, open areas for visibility. One of the things you're also going to see are TV monitors when you first walk in, and those are recorded, as he mentioned, 24/7. We also have a crime program within the company, Crime Doesn't Pay Campaign, and we also have stickers and 800 numbers on the front doors and on the sides to help reduce crime. We also have our own security department, so as things may occur, this person can get involved with security issues, and they have a lot of contacts within the police force and they work very closely within, with the police departments all over California. So we do have a very comprehensive program in place, and thank you for your time.
We have one question of you, Mr. Gronky. We have actually two questions. Mr. Gronky, first.
Just a couple of questions for clarification. There seems to be some confusion over ARCO's request for alcohol at a site. Can you clarify that at all?
I think that, I'm not really that familiar with the sites in question. I know the one on Tamarack. I think the issue was because it was close to a school, I believe, was the issue there, that site.
Okay.
I think it's across the street.
And the other issue seems to be some confusion over the percentage that the sale of alcohol would be at a particular site. Is that dependent on the site rather than?
Yeah, it really depends on the site.
It varies.
It varies from site to site.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lopez?
Need to ask him a question.
Sir? We're not done yet. No, there's one more question.
Oh, okay. You said, are you a station operator, you say?
I'm a franchise business consultant.
Oh, franchise.
So I work with ARCO.
Okay, so.
I supervise 21 locations in San Diego.
So you, did you work on the one there in Temecula? There's one on, no?
No.
Okay, good enough, thank you.
Was involved in that, okay.
Okay, very good. Next, Sam Sow.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Sam Sow. I am related to he, I'm his brother, and also his partner. What, the, well, I'm a little bit nervous, I apologize.
Please go ahead.
And the, well, I feel that the vacant building is, you know, to have an ARCO, there should be much better to, just to have an empty building. And as my brother has mentioned it, you know, that will bring in more, more crimes to the area, so to have an ARCO be also implemented, extra camera, extra lighting, and personnel 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It's almost like a neighborhood watch program. And it's, it is, you know, very important to have the personnel there to monitor the situation, to report any suspicious. And, you know, as running a small business is very hard as is, and to have the restriction on top of that, it tend to fail. So my brother and I is asking all of you to give us the tool to succeed in business and to compete effectively with others. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next would, oh, sir? We have a question.
Do you say you have other gas stations?
The stations in the area?
We have one in, you mean, how many we own?
Yes.
We have one in Santee and the other one at Script Ranch.
How many years have you been in the business?
Seven years.
How many?
Seven years, sir.
Seven?
Yes, sir.
Do they all have beer and wine?
Yes, they do.
At each other's stations?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next is, I believe it's J. H. Woods.
I would like to bring some things to your attention. You know, I know there's a lot of people who stood up and they're opposed this, and there's a lot of them. I don't know if, I think that I represent one of the opposition to this idea. And, you know, ARCO, they couldn't wait to get to the, you know, to the podium and, you know, to pollute the community with more alcohol and potentially a higher crime index. You know, they're concerned about more cooler doors, and, you know, I don't think that's going to get the city to more, you know, excellence the way everybody here has been elected to do so. You have a crime substance abuse prevention commission here, and this is totally opposite of what, you know, that commission would go in the interest of. It seems to me, just as observing here, is that my definition, I don't know about your definition of crime, but I know my definition of crime, which is basically idleness. And when I look at all of the information that's been represented, I know you councilmen and women know what crime is and what will lead to crime and what common sense would have you believe. No matter if you limit the hours of alcohol or, you know, that just doesn't cut it. And, you know, when you look at sales and you say about convenience, you know, to me, an abandoned place is better than a place that's going to sell alcohol, no matter what, you know, what percentage that is of sales. I do know that that is the first gateway to other, you know, substances and to basically not going down the way. Some, as the years go on, become more mature and they, you know, drink for casual, casualness. But, and when the ARCO and the gentleman who wants to get this facility says he's going to put as many cameras and, you know, they're going to monitor it and make, you know, that they limit the hours and customers come and go and they're going to be part of the, you know, the crime prevention and this goodwill commitment that they have, that doesn't cut it, you know? And for me, I look at this as, as, as the beginning of, you know, loitering and things of that nature, noise, you know, fighting, all these different things. And I think that I represent one of the people here, and, you know, you denying this would be a way of saying, "You want to have a business, fantastic. There's plenty of other places that have alcohol." You, you know, and it seems that even the experts here that look at this have said you shouldn't do it. So, you know, there's other vacant stores, yes, we're in the worst situation economically.
Mr. Woods, your time is up.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Antonio Morales?
My name is Antonio Morales. I am managing partner of Intaha LLC. We own L.F.C.T. Consumer Services. We operate two branches here in Vista. We've been in business here for five years now. Previously, I've worked for Fortune 500, actually Fortune 100 companies. I also worked as the manager for the business consulting practice for Arthur Andersen in Los Angeles. So I just want to make five points here. First, I need to put on my reading glasses. The young lady over here talked about the frog that dies in water as it boils real slowly and doesn't realize that it's dead. I feel like that frog in this economy. Anyway, first of all, I believe that a nationally recognized tenant would attract other recognized names as potential tenants to the center and to the surrounding area. The existence of a nationally recognized name in a potential site area is a significant consideration taken into account when other national chains consider to move into the area. And we know if you drive down that Santa Fe corridor between Boullbier and Vista Village, there are two nationally recognized names, one 7-Eleven, and actually, that's it. ARCO, I think, would be a really nice addition, and I think that that would attract other big names into the area. The second point is that right now, there's a dark abandoned corner there. If ARCO were to move in there, we'd have new landscaping, new lot lighting, new security cameras inside and outside the building. This would help, and I think one of the individuals over here pointed out that the existing condition right there is already, he said, an environment that creates, that creates loitering. So bringing in the ARCO there with the big awnings and the lighting and the nice colors and the cameras, I believe, would eliminate some of that loitering there in the area. This dark abandoned corner would have new landscaping, like I said, new lot lighting, new security cameras inside and out, and would help reduce loitering, improve physical security, and definitely, in my opinion, reduce crime. I've operated businesses all over the globe, including some of the toughest neighborhoods in Brazil, Sao Paulo, Brazil, and Mexico City. And I tell you, when we'd put in a big corporate name there with real nice lighted facilities, crime would go down regardless of what kind of a business it was. Four, the ARCO project would increase licensing and tax revenues for the local community, helping at a time when, right now, everybody knows, we're looking for revenues for cities and for communities to help improve the facilities, including supporting the police department, fire departments, and everything else supports those of us that have to operate in the environment. Five, this new establishment in the community will help draw consumers to the area, which will help support those businesses like mine that already exist in the area. I believe that it would increase the traffic flow and help those of us that are there survive, because that center there right now is half-empty. And unless there's something in that corner there, and no one stepped up to the plate and taking that corner over, but unless someone steps up to the plate and takes that corner over, there may be more of us that have to leave that center. And it won't just be the corner that's empty, it may be that whole darn strip center. It's been really tough.
Your time is up.
Okay, just one final point. The ARCO project, I believe, would also create some jobs in the area with the bad unemployment situation, and I think that's a big plus.
I'd like to ask a question, Mayor.
We have a question, Mr. Lopez?
What did you say the name of your business is?
It's Intaha LLC, that's the managing company. We own L.F.C.T. Consumer Services.
Okay, how long have you been there?
Five years.
Five years. In the five years that you've been there in that center, have you had an increase or decrease in people renting there?
Decrease.
A decrease.
Decrease, yes.
Decrease started when?
Decrease started about a year and a half ago, two years ago. We had the Salvation Army that was there that took over that entire wing that was gone, and we've had other businesses that have rotated through that center, and then we have that gas station, that corner there. And I believe someone made the point about the gas station failing there. I don't think so much, I don't think it was because it was a gas station, I think it was poor management, just an outside observer's opinion.
Thank you.
Okay, next would be Erica Leary.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Erica Leary, and I'm the program manager for the North Coastal Prevention Coalition and the Vista Community Clinic. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I've been here before. Just to remind you, the mission of the North Coastal Prevention Coalition is to reduce the harm of alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and other drugs in the cities of Carlsbad, Oceanside, and Vista through community action, education, support, and collaboration. Was mentioned that recent surveys are showing some increases in teen alcohol and drug use, which is very concerning to us, as are the recent string of tragedies that we've seen leading to fatalities of young teens at the hands of drinking drivers, all an indication that we all need to do more. NCPC, we're not against alcohol. We recognize that it's a legal product enjoyed by many adults, but we do recognize that it does contribute to problems in our community. it does contribute to problems in our communities, and that we all need to work together to solve those problems. We are against underage drinking in any situation, and want to do all that we can to prevent underage drinking. Alcohol is associated with the leading causes of death for teens and young adults, including motor vehicle crashes, homicides, and suicides. I also want to make it clear that this is not against ARCO or any specific business. We've heard a lot of wonderful things about the plans for the development, gas station mini-market, car wash. All the speakers that I've heard so far are not opposed to any of that, and we're talking simply about a license for beer and wine, regardless of what business it is, that they're saying will bring in one to five percent of sales. So, that's what we need to concentrate on, is this increased availability of alcohol. And there's numerous research studies that have documented the impact of increased available, increased alcohol availability on communities, both related to crime and related to youth access to alcohol. I was thinking of an analogy to make, and I was thinking of a doctor. If a doctor tells you that you need to cut out fat of your diet, the doctor isn't talking about Winchell's Donuts, or Burger King, or McDonald's, or any particular brand, just like we're not talking about ARCO. We're simply talking about the availability of beer and wine. A very recent study compared 50 ZIP codes in California that showed that communities with higher numbers of off-premise alcohol outlets correlated to greater numbers of teenagers, 14 to 16, who said they were able to gain access to alcohol. This just came out in the summer of 2009. The researchers state their key message of the study is that having greater numbers of alcohol outlets creates an environment where alcohol is easy to obtain for underage youth. And whenever it's easy for kids to get their hands on alcohol, life-changing problems are sure to follow. And I also wanted to mention, there was talk about the census tract being under, you know, still allowing for another alcohol license. The census tract right across the street is one over. It's over-concentrated, allowing for five, and there's already six. So, we definitely have enough off-sale alcohol outlets in that area. So, I'm out of time. I just wanted to logically lay out the conclude, okay. Well, you, as elected officials, have the authority to make our communities safe and do all that we can to prevent underage drinking, and I hope that you follow staff recommendations as the doctors in this case recommending safe communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear from Matt Wilson. Now, we appreciate your applause, but truly, it's unnecessary, and we will ask you if you'd please just kind of refrain from it. Matt Wilson?
I'm here, my name is Matt Wilson. I'm here to represent the property management and the owners of the property. We just wanted to come out and show support, because we feel that this would be great for the center and the existing tenants, and also improve the overall security of the area, because that gas station has been sitting there vacant for quite a few months, and I think that dark corner of the property is a problem. So, thank you for your time.
There's also Ryan Littrich, is his?
He's with me, but that's okay.
We have a question, if you'd please come back.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Yeah, just a couple of questions about the center in general. How many gas stations have been there since it's opened?
Since I've worked with the company, I've only been there for about a year, is only one.
Okay, so you're not aware of the history of the center, then?
I believe that was the only gas station, but I can't confirm for sure.
And do you know anything of the history, why they left? Why the business?
Well, the business struggled for several months, and then eventually, we had to evict them.
Okay. And presently, how many, how many sites are there at that center?
How many tenants?
How many business sites are there?
I believe there's eight.
And how many are presently vacated?
There are, I believe, four vacancies.
So, a good 50%?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Dylan Harwood.
Good evening, my name is Dylan Harwood, and I'm a Vista High School student, as well as a member of the North Coastal Prevention Youth Coalition. I'm here to recommend that the city council does not approve the new ARCO station's alcohol license. As a youth coalition, we have been working diligently to put an end to the problems of underage drinking, and at the same time, this issue arises, where the adults in our community are given the chance to contribute to the problem or help our cause. It's proven that youth have greater access to alcohol in a community with more alcohol outlets. This adds to the problem of underage drinking, which is already a serious concern within our community. We should keep this in mind while concerning, or, I'm sorry, while considering this license. Every day, hundreds of students walk home from school, both, or, from a number of schools around the area. Vista High School is my school. There's also an elementary up the road, Gwahomi Park Academy, and VAPA is also over there. And they walk on North Santa Fe, and they would walk directly past this new alcohol It's just not a healthy environment for the students. And I'm not asking you to make a decision that would hurt our economy, but make a decision that in the long run will create a healthier environment in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we'll hear from Renee Glatschbach.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members and staff. Now's the time to remember and never forget beautiful students Chelsea King and Amber Dubois, Letitia Hernandez, and all the beautiful eight students who were killed last year, who were deprived of their constitutional rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness by evil perpetrators. You need to do the right thing when you vote on PC 8133, accentuate the positive, which would be food, the gas station, and the car wash. Those are all positive. And delete the negative, which is alcohol. Vista has more than enough alcohol licenses and the tragedies that have come from alcohol. All future gas stations need to be alcohol-free for the safety of all citizens. Too many crimes occur and guns are used, innocent people get killed, and motorists drive away, not caring who they crash into and kill while drunk. Don't you remember Golden State Gas Station on South Santa Fe and all their crimes? Honor Vista's mission statement to provide for the health, safety, and welfare for the citizens of Vista. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Cliff Kaiser.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Cliff Kaiser, Chairman of the Vista Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here to support this ARCO installation, including the alcohol permit. I don't believe this is an issue related to alcohol or not alcohol. We've already heard several testimonies that it's readily available in our community, even in this community right along Santa Fe. This is an issue about convenience and the ability for a businessman to get business done, both the landlord and this gentleman here that wants to bring in a business and create probably a safer area than is currently there. If you have more traffic there, chances are that people are going to be less inclined to have crime. So, I would ask you to support this gentleman's request to put an ARCO there with alcohol permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Next is Jack Sholl. Please forgive me if I pronounced your name incorrectly.
I'm Jack Sholly. Mayor Vance, council members. My wife and I, my wife Judy and I own properties on North Santa Fe, including the Fountain Car Wash, which is one of three car washes within a half a mile of the proposed site. I think there's enough car washes along North Santa Fe. But I think you're also looking at the face of the off-site consumption. They're going to go over to the ARCO station, pick up their booze, and bring it over to our car wash, and try to consume it at our car wash. We've been good neighbors for 15 years. We haven't had any police incidences at our car wash, and now is not the time to start. So, we're opposed to that, we're opposed to the alcohol. North Santa Fe doesn't need any more booze. And I want to address one thing that was brought up. I have a little bit of knowledge, maybe, right, it may be wrong, but I spoke to the tenant. She operated Filco, which was the gas station, convenience store. Talked to her about two and a half, three years ago, Bianca, and I could use the Filco station, and I asked her, "How's business?" And Bianca said, "I really am desperate to find additional sources of income." I said, "Really?" She said, "I'm paying over $11,000 a month in rent." And I said to myself, "My goodness, how can you, how can you make a business? How can you operate a business with that facing you every morning when you get up?" So, I'm just looking at it from a different perspective. What are they charging for rent that is requiring or forcing them to go to you people and ask for a change to the zoning? How much rent? How much, how much is, I mean, do we have an AIG, and a City Corp. in miniature here? Do they, are they saying that, you know, "We need to be bailed out"? Is the landlord saying, "You have to bail us out, otherwise, we're going to put a blight on the community"? Well, I don't believe that. It would be an interesting, I know nobody wants government nosing into, you know, people's business, but I think that was a factor in why Bianca went out of business. I don't know, Mr. Lopez, maybe you knew Bianca. She was a wonderful gal, and tried very hard to make a go of it, but I think she was fighting a losing proposition. So, it may not be any of your business, but it may be a factor in why they're requesting so much with the site. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. I have another one here. That was the last of the green cards that was submitted, and I have one here that's normally for oral communications, but I think it might be for this one. And that would be Gloria Ortiz. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, no, you're right. This is for later on. I'm aware of that now. And, so that's all of the ones I have. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this item? Please come forward and state your name, please.
Hello, members of the council. My name's Tenille Candidate, and I'm the Youth Coalition Coordinator. I work with these extraordinary youth here, and there's been a lot of mention of convenience. This ability to sell alcohol and beer should, or wine and beer should be something where convenience is considered. And I would just like to mention that the future of our youth being put at risk for convenience is very disturbing to me. And we have longitudinal sociological research that shows that when you increase alcohol outlets, that it increases youth access to alcohol and social problems. And I think that when we make these kind of decisions, it needs to be based on research that people have put the effort into gathering all of this data for us, so we're, most recently, as Erica mentioned, a three-year study that was done, where we have some hard numbers. And I think that instead of looking at an issue of convenience, or even with all due respect, people's good faith efforts and their good intentions about making sure that it isn't a detrimental thing to the crime rates in our, in our community, instead, we need to look at research. We need to have our decisions be research-based, and to also consider the long-term effects of the little decisions that we make. And I would really like for the focus to be on the future of our youth versus convenience in purchasing alcohol, and there are already a lot of alcohol outlets in that area. Thank you.
Mr. Sanchez, do you wish to speak?
Definitely. With Mr. Mayor, council members, Alejandro Sanchez, for the record, 615 Townside Drive. I have lived in this community for over 20 years, and I thank you very much to all the residents. I know some of my friends that are here tonight. I thank every single one who opposed to this project. I think it's so foolish, in my opinion, and it's good to have business coming to our city, but this is not the right time, and certainly, it's not the right place, for sure. Our city is not in bankrupt right now. We've been buying properties like racing. We've been spending a lot of money so far. But you know what? Consider the fact that if you really wanted to have more business to come to our city, consider the voices of your community first. This is a good thing to have this hearing, undoubtedly. I like it. You know, but do not, do not have the idea that just because some people are trying to make good business here to the expense of our children, to the expense of the community, to the expense that so many dangers could come, you know, to our kids, especially our kids. I heard one of the guys addressing to you the fact that we have Vista High, Gwahomi Park Academy, VAPA, you know, I can name all the schools around that area in particular. So, and I hear somebody who says, "Oh, it'll, it'll help the community, you know, because it's a bad area right there." Well, you know what? We have good neighbors there. I live, actually, I live in that area right there. I can tell you, you know, that'll be a very, very bad, awful thing, just to consider to have the AMPM there. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the testimony that we have for this evening, and we'll now take a moment to discuss this among the city council. Mr. Campbell?
Mayor, I was going to ask if you would allow Mr. Sau to respond to some of this as the applicant. He may have some comments based on all he's heard that I think would help us in our deliberations if he could.
Thank you very much for that. You know, like the gentleman said, my goal as a businessman, the gas station, similar to the gas stations we've operated in the other two cities, is that if the neighborhood isn't a success, if it doesn't beautify the neighborhood, if it doesn't make people feel safe when they come to the station, obviously, I would fail as an operator, and that's not my goal. In regards to the big issue of teen underage drinking, we're very proactive, and we have strict policies, and we have, both stations, we have never had any violation, and I, you know, I make it a proactive effort to try to continue that same type of good track record. So, I just want the city council to know that my goals are the same as the citizens here, whether they are opposed of me or not. I think they're all valid concerns, and I'm with them. And I'm not here to say alcohol is bad, or alcohol is good. What I am trying to do is, it's vital, I mean, in this case, ARCO has given us a letter saying that, you know, without the ABC, there's no ARCO franchise. Without the franchise and its ability to finance and support, we would not be able to see success, and that's why we're here. If we can operate a station without the ABC and still become an ARCO AMPM, I would not be here tonight in front of you asking for an ABC license. ABC, the sale and alcohol is so miniscule, the one, the thing that we're really kind of fighting for is to get the franchise. In order for us to get the franchise, it's a requirement by ARCO AMPM, and that's, that's the only thing I can clarify, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Campbell, did you have other comments?
Thank you, Mr. Sau. I do have some questions of staff.
Thank you very much. Have a seat. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. We have several AMPM franchises in Vista. One I know is at Mar Vista, and others at Sycamore, and if there's others, I'm not catching them at this time, but does anybody on staff know if that's been a problem as to inducing crime into the neighborhoods, or have they operated well? Have there been issues I'm unaware of?
That's a question that's probably best answered by the sheriff's captain, if he's available. He might have some statistics on other AMPM locations. It's not anything that's been brought to the attention of the planning staff as part of this application.
Captain, would you like to speak to that?
Captain Curran, would you please come up?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I don't have the statistics for any of the specific AMPMs here in Vista, or in the county areas of Vista, so none of them draw specific attention to us as Sheriff's Department, as in, we respond to one any more than we respond to any other convenience store. Does that answer it, Mr. Campbell?
It does. It's just, I've never seen it brought to our attention. It's just, I've never seen it brought to our attention at any rate that they stand out one way or the other, so apparently they're for the most part complying and not a problem. Mayor, can I ask another question?
Sure.
I'm frustrated trying to understand Ms. LeBron's residency. And ma'am, would you try and help me understand that? Because I think you applied as a Vista resident. Yet I see some materials that were provided to us that don't show that you actually were able to receive mail at that address. Could you clarify that for me?
Nineteen seventy-four Wellington Lane is where my daughter resides.
I know where that is.
When I came here last year, that's where I moved with my daughter because she had a second child. The... When I came here for the meeting, when I had heard of it at the last moment, it was a temporary address, is what I wrote, because I knew I was going to be there for a three-week period of time. I didn't realize that this was going to continue like this, but that is not a permanent address. It was a temporary address. So, what is your question beyond that?
You normally live where, please?
Well, at the time, when I first came in, I was at nineteen seventy-four Wellington, then at two-one-three-two Buena Creek Road Vista, which is, that was the permanent address, Buena Creek Road, but we had some things that had to get done, and that was a permanent... That's where I was getting my mail. This one was the temporary address at the time of the meeting, and that's what I wrote.
Okay. Would you mind if I ask you a question? The attorney may tell me I shouldn't be asking it, but I'll ask it anyway. And that is, I'm having trouble making a connection as to you and this particular applicant as to why it came to your attention and whether this... What is your thinking on this? Why are you bringing this to our attention?
Why am I bringing it to your attention? My daughter's been here for five years. Excuse me, it's going on the sixth year. And when I went over, because of the work that was being done at the Buena Creek Road property, went over the North Citrus and saw the condition and just overheard about the hearing, the meeting that was going on here, I said I wanted to get involved and see what was going on. When I came here, frankly, I was appalled. I was appalled at some of the comments I heard, that, "Wow, I'd like to be..." The idea that I can just buy a loaf of bread, gas up, and buy beer, that's a convenience I want. When I heard that coming from the Planning Commission, I was absolutely appalled, knowing that my daughter wants to be here, knowing that I resided here and that I had just made plans to move my son here and my daughter, my other daughters following, I thought, "That's not what I want for them." And yes, this touches me. Again, we're not against a businessman making money. That's not the problem. It's just the mixed-use permit of more alcohol. I work with youths. I was a counselor for over seventeen years, family counselor. I've seen people affected by alcohol, and I've never done anything like this. I just happened to get involved in it. I thought I was just going to be attending a meeting, and that was it, but when I saw what happened and the few people that were here, it's as if though they were not heard, it bothered me. Frankly, it bothered me, and maybe it's that East Coast that's coming out, whatever it is. I'm not as laid back as everyone else is, and maybe I'll get... Some of you will rub off on me, and hopefully, some of you will rub off on you. But I don't want to be like that frog that's just boiling to death, you know, just cooks to death. I want to be able to say, "Wait a moment, something's not right here." And the citizens should be heard, and hopefully, I clarified as far as the residents. Since I... As I mentioned, since I was last here and filed the appeal, my son was attacked, I still want to continue with VRCD, but I am not fond of Vista right now, what's gone on, because he was hospitalized, he had to have surgery, and because of that, what my efforts, which were to go after more churches and business owners and residents, that was hindered because of the at-home emergency that I had to deal with, which is my son's life. And to know that that was alcohol-related further infuriated me, to be quite honest with you.
Well, thank you for standing up. It's really a pleasure to see citizens stand up for issues that they're passionate about.
I appreciate you giving me the opportunity, and that I mean sincerely.
Thank you.
Okay. Are those... Does that conclude your questions, Mr. Campbell? Okay. Mr. Gronky.
Thank you. Some questions of staff. First of all, I didn't read closely, but the restrooms are inside or outside in this particular case?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the first part of your question?
The restrooms, are they inside or outside?
There is a restroom that is actually located outside, and there's one that's inside.
Okay. Okay. And there was some talk about notification. Did this applicant go through the proper notification to the residents adjoining the apartment?
Correct.
Okay. And also, there was also talk about displaying alcohol on the floor that's not refrigerated. Did I hear that right or no? Is there alcohol unlocked, I guess is the best question?
There would have to be... Actually, the locking device mechanisms would actually be installed at all coolers that would have the beer and wine.
I understand there's coolers that are locked, but is there alcohol displayed on the floor outside the coolers?
Not to my knowledge. That would not be the case. They would have to be inside the coolers.
And so, we could make that restriction?
As far as...
Making sure the alcohol is locked? And the applicant is shaking their head. Okay, thank you. And I think I know the answer to this, but I'll ask it anyway. We're approving an alcohol license for this particular business. If this particular business is not successful, and I hope that doesn't happen, but if it's not, what happens to that alcohol license?
The SUP that is before you for the off-site consumption, that is, that stays with the property, basically. That's the difference between that and the ABC license, which the ABC license, one could carry it with them to another location so long as they got land use approvals for that other location.
Okay.
But the SUP stays with the land. So, potentially, it could be that it's Arco. If it's not Arco, it could be another gas station that does sell alcohol for off-site consumption.
Okay. Can the applicant... Can you come up and answer a question for me really quickly? So, you've been in the business for six or seven years, you say?
Yes.
And you have two sites already, successful sites?
Yes.
Why did you choose this one?
We chose this one because we thought it was a good location and there was the right amount of traffic, and, you know, situated in a nice corner, and, you know, we thought it would make good business sense.
So, in your business sense and the history that you have with AMPM, you saw this as a viable site?
Yes, particularly the demographics and the traffic flow bodes well for both Arco because they... What they do is they have a very extensive review process in addition to our own assessment, and so they've reviewed the project and they have bought off on it, so they've kind of put in their yes vote, which confirms our vote, because they have other analysis that they do, third-party analysis type of, more sophisticated stuff than...
And you believe in enough that you want to put in a million dollars for improvements into the site, too?
That's correct. Yes, we think it's a viable investment, a long-term investment, that we can get Arco AMPM, we will be successful there.
Okay, thank you. And I have just one more question.
Please.
Of the captain.
Sir?
I thought I heard that the applicant had come to the Sheriff's Department and discussed the site.
He's spoken many times with our crime analysis unit.
Okay. So, he has taken the initiative to try to make sure that they rectify any kind of crime situations that might occur because of alcohol there?
That's correct. Carmella Lutz, our crime analyst, one of our... I'm sorry, one of our crime prevention analysts, has given a list of crime prevention by environmental design, things that would need to be done to allow this to happen.
And so, all the stuff has been incorporated into this building?
That's correct.
I'm getting it not ahead from...
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Lopez, I was for the captain. Don't leave. I'll ask this question, then I'll go on. There was a gas station out there on Melrose. What's the name of it? By the...
Osceenda.
Osceenda. That station, for many years, was denied a liquor license, and finally, I think because of the numbers were too high, and he made certain provisions in that gas station, and in the report, it shows that the numbers have gone down. Do you know why those numbers have gone down? I mean, here, they didn't want to put in a gas station because the numbers were high, but now the numbers are lower.
You're talking about six hundred Osceenda, that's the Chevron Station.
Yes.
I believe they opened around two thousand, got their liquor license around two thousand and seven. At the time, the Sheriff's Department, by policy, anything over one hundred and twenty percent, it's our practice to not recommend approval of a special-use permit for that. Obviously, we're not policymakers. We're simply give our advice on that. Why the numbers? It's now that, I believe, that crime rate now is about one hundred and eighteen percent for that B-312, what we call it as. We never changed our stance on that as far as the... Our recommendation was not to allow it. Why the crime rate went down, I couldn't tell you. There are certain factors there. It's not close to any residents. The closest residence there is a thousand feet away. That may have something to do with it. I know there was concern about the jail that is relatively close. That is not something we run into on a regular basis. It's not a common thing that we respond to because of inmates being released, going to that facility, and engaging in any behavior based on alcohol. So, to answer your question, I can't tell you why the rate has gone down. I'm pleased that it has.
Now, that's not what I wanted to hear. I wanted you to tell me. It's because you're doing a good job. That's what I wanted to hear, okay?
Well, I appreciate that.
But it has gone down.
It has gone down. That's correct.
It has gone down. Okay, thank you. Now, I... Comments were made about... I'm not gonna ask you any questions.
Thank you, Captain.
I won't go far.
Sit down. Comments were made that the Planning Commission... I am the liaison for the Planning Commission, and that they were not attentive or were not listening. The Planning Commission does listen. While you're speaking, they are listening. We up here are listening to every one of you, what you're saying, and we try and make the best decision for the community. The thing that bothers me about this situation here is that I have a Mexican restaurant, and when I first went into business, there was only about six restaurants in the city of Vista forty years ago, and now there's like eighty restaurants in the city of Vista, and it does create a little bit of problem for me, but it just means that I just have to get a sharper pencil and do a little better job if things go down. Now, in the area, there is a car wash just in the next block over, and they've done a great job there. They keep it up, and I've been there before. It will affect them a little. There's also a market across the street from them. It will affect them a little, being in business there. I understand that. Understand it because I'm in business and I understand it. But when you have a company like this who has a good track record coming into Vista, it's something good. My son-in-law has a business in Temecula, and the reason I asked the gentleman about the store in Temecula is that they had an area there in Temecula that it wasn't... I mean, it was okay area, but then Arco came in and built a beautiful gas station there and all very nicely done, and it... Not only did it draw more business, but it cleaned the area tremendously, and it's a popular, very popular gas station in Temecula area. This particular gas station that I see is dark at night. It looks like it's an abandoned place. The area that it's in definitely, especially that center, definitely needs some help. I feel for some of the businesses who are in competition with what's going to go in there, but overall, I think that a company like that, maybe the other companies will then create more business for them also as far as... You need more competition creates more business. So, when I look at what's going in, I think it's a good thing for the area. I've had a drunk driver run into me pretty seriously years ago, and I understand that happens in the community. My daughter was hit on Postal Way a couple of years back and got injured with a drunk driver. I understand that. But when you have a national company like this coming in who has very strict regulations on what they're doing, the planning that they have done, they are spending a million dollars on a gas station, I don't know if I would spend that kind of money on something that's not mine, but I guess they see something that I don't see. And but with so many positive things here with what they're doing, tonight, I will be supporting this project. Thank you.
Could we please have the... We've listened to you all night, and so it's our turn right now, so put your hand down. I'm not gonna call on you. And we've listened, and I think we've been very polite to you, and I think that's due us as well. So, I would ask you that we have no further demonstrations like I just heard. Mrs. Ritter.
Okay. I've been just kind of analyzing all of this and listening to all, both sides, but when I listen to the applicant, I see that he has locking coolers, he's a responsible owner, and it's a recognized franchise that has standards. You know, I'm thinking, okay, so will it improve... It improves that corner and that center with the lighting and the improvements. I don't see that it's gonna increase alcohol consumption because I just think it'll spread it out more, you know, whatever. I don't see that it'll... Because it's one more place, I don't see that more people will drink. I...
Please, would you please keep yourselves quiet? And if you don't, then please leave, or I'll have you escorted out.
I know that center is struggling, because I had some clients that were looking at. I know the Salvation Army left fourteen thousand square feet in there, and then there's another about fifty-six hundred additional square feet that are empty in that center, and so I think that this will help that center, so I think it would, you know, but I think without it, that it'll just, you know, stay empty like that. So, as far as underage drinking, I do worry about the kids and the underage drinking, but the owner seems to be responsible, and I think we also need responsible adults and parents that, you know, watch the kids and make sure they don't are out there drinking alcohol for the, you know, the families. So, I'm gonna support this tonight. I just try to weigh the success of the center and whether, you know, it improves the area versus, you know, versus the alcohol sales, which I just don't see that it's gonna increase or make be a negative in that area. So, that's kind of where I stand.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank Ms. LeBron, and I'd like to thank Erica Leary for all she does, and Mrs. Glotzbach for your passion and concern about our youth, and Michelle, you spoke very well to the issue, and I think there's a major, major role for you and the coalition in doing some very, very positive things for our youth. But I think tonight, we're dealing with a commercial decision as well as an emotional decision and a decision related to alcohol use. I don't... I'm an economist and a marketing person. I don't believe, based on what I've heard from Mr. Sow and based on checking his business reputation, that he'll be significantly, if at all, increasing the alcohol consumption in that area, number one. Number two, I would be voting against this should he tell me this is fifteen to twenty percent of his business, because I don't think we need to have that attention brought to alcohol, and I don't see it being really a focus of yours, Mr. Sow, and I hope I'm understanding you correctly, and I'll be holding you to that, to your word, and I think you're a man of your word. The center is a major investment for some people, and they did... They really went out of their way to make it a nice center, and it has not done well. And the reason I don't think it's not done well is it's not had an anchor, it's not anything that was brought in a consistent pattern of traffic, just it's been a casual demand center. And today, I walked at the center and talked with the merchants in the center. They are all enthusiastic over the prospect of having Mr. Sow in the Arco station. None of them were focusing, of course, on alcohol. That wasn't their concern, but they want to see more traffic driven to the center, and they think this will be a natural opportunity for them, and I do believe it will. I want to thank staff for their adhering to guidelines, which I believe is what you've done in recommending this not be approved. done in recommending this not be approved, and I simply feel, though, that there's a greater good for the improvement, the reduction of blight, the safety of that community, I think will improve with the lighting and the safety standards that Mr. Sow will be implementing, and I'll be supporting the issue.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the council?
Glad to close the hearing, Mayor.
No, I think... There's one other question I had. Captain Curran, if you might come back. We have here, basically in my mind, a couple of competing issues here. One is that we have an empty abandoned service station, and on the other hand, we have one that says that they're going to open and provide some life to the center, but also but they're going to sell alcohol. I'm going to put you on the spot and ask you, you know, I look at, you know, as an abandoned service station as a blighted area, kind of like a broken window in a building that is kind of an attractive nuisance to those people who want to do further damage to the building. And that's often been the case in a lot of places that we have in the community where someone abandons a building, then it causes creator... May cause or may not, and this is what I'm asking you. In your opinion, does that offer as much of a concern to you, having the abandoned service station, as the alcohol sales?
It absolutely does. Actually, you took a term right out of the cops' philosophy that the Sheriff's Department has embraced, as well as the city. And cops, for those who are not familiar, that's the community-oriented policing. And the broken window theory, it's a theory that was developed many years ago. If you see a broken window in a community and you don't fix it, it's going to lead to more broken windows. If you see it, you repair it, you clean it up, it's going to just make the area more beautiful. If you leave it alone, it's just going to increase it, and it's demise. So, your assessment there, Mr. May, I wholeheartedly agree that that building is a magnet for trouble right now. If we leave it alone... I went through there yesterday as well, walked around it, drove through the lot a couple of times, up and down the street, and it does stand out as a nuisance, in my opinion. So, I completely agree with you, yes.
Well, that kind of gives me a little bit of a dilemma, because I am not a real fan of alcohol. I don't drink, and I don't believe in drinking. But on the other hand, I feel as though that it's as much of an attraction to crime in the area, having the abandoned station there, is perhaps as the sale of the beer and wine there. And so, that, like I say, it's kind of a dilemma to me. I appreciate your comments, Captain. If there's anything else you have to add?
I'd just say that I made kind of a list of the pros and cons, and if you are asking my opinion, I believe the national brand does improve that area. We have another 7-Eleven, probably four tenths of a mile to the south of there, that is really, it's well lit, it draws very little trouble, and I kind of looked at that as a comparison. Anything in 21 years of doing this job, I can tell you, anything that brings jobs to a community, I've seen an improvement. I've worked all into this county, so I see that as a positive. So, that would be the end of my comments, though.
What kind of a program do you have in terms of monitoring underage purchase of alcohol?
Well, actually, we have several grants that we've been able to get over the last couple of years, where we do numerous, what we call sting operations. We'll send underage people into those, into various establishments throughout the city and try to do illegal alcohol purchase. We'll do those numerous times throughout the city. Also, as you know, throughout the... Especially during the holidays and the summer months, we'll be very aggressive in our DUI enforcements. Besides just setting up checkpoints, we'll aggressively go out and do directed patrols looking for alcohol driving violations. We will do bar checks with our cops teams, the community-oriented policing, so we're very aggressive as doing those as well. So, we have quite a bit. Also, in the schools, we have various alcohol awareness programs, and I true am truly affected by the tragedies in the last few months of 2009 with the many teenagers that were killed and hurt in the various alcohol-related crashes. So, we do take that very serious, and anytime we have the chance to make a presentation, we take it, and we do it.
Have we done the underage checks in this area in terms of the sale of alcohol to minors in recent years?
Yes.
In this particular beat?
We've done them all over the city.
Okay. And have we... What have we found?
It's... Your primary establishments that are liquor stores and your convenience stores are very good in this community, about checking IDs. It's very rare that we find those violations of allowing minors to purchase.
Okay. I know that the tragedies that happened toward the end of 2009, as far as the news was concerned, I don't believe that was from the purchase of alcohol. I believe it was from alcohol that was served to them while they were at various social functions.
A lot of that you...
And that was provided primarily...
Permissive adults.
By adults. And so, that to me is the tragedy, too. Does the council have any further comments or anything that they want to do? Oh, yes. Mrs. Geldert, we've received petitions on both sides, and so that we want to make sure that you're all aware that we've received the petitions and what the numbers represent. So, Mrs. Geldert?
I just wanted to make sure that tonight, the city clerk received a petition from the VRCD group, and they have 212 signatures opposing the project. And then, the applicant turned in yesterday 609 signatures supporting the project. So, I wanted that read into the record because those were turned in tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. As far as I'm concerned, I look at this, and as I said before, I am not particularly a fan of alcohol, but I believe the blight that's caused there and the attractive nuisances there, I think probably would lead to a greater problem for the community than what this will do. I'm going to have to support it. Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
Mayor, I'd move to close the public hearing and adopt the alternate resolution, which is stated on page 61 of 80 in the staff report, which allows the sale of beer and wine only as an off-site consumption.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion to second. Is there any further comments? Please cast your votes. And that is approved unanimously by the city council. We thank you for your coming tonight and voicing your opinion, and we appreciate that. And we'll take about a two-minute break, and then we'll conclude the meeting while we enter the council chamber. Pardon? No, we have... We're still going to come back.[1112.24] It's- Okay. How can I tell the audience that? All right, the next item on the agenda is oral communications, and now Gloria Ortiz and Bianca, I'm sorry, I can't read your last name. Please.
Good evening, council members. My name is Gloria Ortiz, and I am a member of North Coastal Prevention Youth Coalition, and I'm here to raise awareness about underage drinking, and how our youth coalition is putting on two underage drinking forums, to help the community discuss this issue.
Hold that microphone up really close to you, please.
We are having, and, we're having a Spanish forum on Tuesday, March 16th, and an English forum on Thursday, March 25th, and it's going to be from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Bappa, which is located at 600 North Santa Fe Avenue. If we may, we wish to leave you, the council, some flyers to the North Coastal Prevention Youth Coalition, so you could attend. Our goal is to bring young adults and adults together to discuss in an intimate environment about this issue, and how we need to work together to take action and make a change in our community. At this time, we would like to show you a video that we have created as a documentary for our program.
I believe our staff has already reviewed this, so please go ahead. It's on you. Why don't you back it up and start over again? We need the students up here operating the equipment.
support us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you coming forth. Mr. Gronky has a comment, yes, please.
Thank you. You know, I just need to make a comment to, to the young people that are joining the coalition. Tonight, you may have had the misconception that somehow we don't think about alcohol, and that it, it has a negative effect on our population. We do think about it all the time, and in fact, we've worked with the coalition in the past to, to put together a social hosting ordinance, which, which, you know, restricts people from having parties at their house and serving alcohol, so, and we believe, we believe in that. And we've also, the mayor talked about before, about having these sting operations by the Sheriff's Department, to, you know, bring young people in and try to have, purchase alcohol. Our, our city has gone ahead and actually taxed our liquor, our liquor operators to, to have additional sting operations, so we've done a number of things with the coalition, and we, we want to continue doing things with the coalition to prevent young people from getting access to alcohol, so I, I keep up the good work.
Mr. Campbell?
Mayor, if I might, Erica can probably clarify this for me, but I believe that the number of alcohol-related binge-drinking deaths, in college binge-drinking primarily, I'm not tight on the number, far exceeded the deaths of our troops in Iraq and Afghanistan in 2008. And it's all tied back to the, I think, the need to do what the coalition is doing, and her parents and schools, to make sure our kids understand there are consequences for that action.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, next, Renee Glotzbach.
Mayor and city council members, when signature events are in place, a need to show the youth by your leadership and actions, that alcohol is not a fun beverage to be consumed at Ringo Park, Fourth of July, is urgent, and also at Scotland-Harland Games, sell fruit juice drinks, ice cream and cones, and watermelons, and avocados. Ringo Park was donated by Emma and Ralph Ringo for the welfare and happiness of all the victims to enjoy, not to become a place to drink alcohol. Youth needs your leadership now, and many deaths have occurred on Vista streets, as you well know this, and children see, and they copy. You know this, don't you, for a fact? So please, change your venues, venues to non-alcoholic beverages, when you have your signature events, also car shows, please, thank you, bye-bye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Glotzbach. Next, is Cliff Kaiser still here?
Yeah.
Alejandro Sanchez.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, good evening, once again. I attended recently to a public hearing by the Vista Irrigation District on March the 4th. It really caught my attention that everything is about money these days, you know? I think our city officials and all these corporations and institutions and districts, they, they looking for, for money. To the expense of what? Of our seniors, of our children? It really caught my attention so much that these people met, and they only said it that they announced it in the newspaper, the open hearing, public hearing. Well, I was the only one who spoke and opposed for the increase of fee rates in our watering district, in the Vista Irrigation District. And I was feeling, you know, the, I don't know, I had a very strong feelings, actually, you know, because I seen a lot of our seniors suffering, you know, and making, just barely making for their bills, you know, and, and I thinking myself, you know, what is the city's doing with these guys, you know? And, and it really concerned me so much that I attended to one of those meetings from the Vista Irrigation District on March 4th, 2008, and they wanted to have some laptops for all those board members, laptops. And it caught my attention that even the, the attorney at law, who represents these guys, Mr. Joseph Yule, wrote down a letter, you know, and, and I want to, just to read you just part of this letter, so it really is going to shock you, and you're probably going to be like, what? Can't believe it, but, you know, this is the truth. Asking for laptops, but let me just quote part of, of this letter, where Mr. Yule addressed to these supposedly board members, or whatever they are, directors. My legal research leads to the conclusion that there is no legal impediment to the board adopting, at the properly-norrised public meeting, a policy establishing a monthly rate to cover this actual necessary and reasonable expenses. Please, please note that I only address here the legal issue, whether it's politically or otherwise desirable, as a matter for the board. I was laughing, you know, they asking for laptops, and now they asking to increase the rates for all our community, all these poor seniors that we have in, you know, I'm in SSI, and I couldn't even pay my bill, and they went and shut me off. I tried to make arrangements, you know, give them some money. I'm a good Christian, I've been attending Emmanuel Fekhamein Church, you know, for years, and I was so glad that my church helped me to, to bail me out this time with my bill, you know? But I noticed that, you know, many people, you know, preaching that they Christians, and it's just a bunch of hypocrites to me, and I wish, I wish, I wish, let me say it, I wish that you guys can, can help all these seniors, and, and send them a very strong message to these people, the Vista Irrigation District, that they have to make arrangements before they cut their services to our seniors, and to our community members in our city.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Next is Harland Dunn, and I understand that you want to speak about something we've already done.
Well, yes, I'm Harland Dunn, a resident here, I'm actually not representing the chamber, even though I'm the chamber board. I really just came up here to congratulate you on making a wise decision on waiving the fee for Security Chevrolet, and having a nice pro-business stance by, because the federal government has made it very hard, and the state keeps stealing our funds, that you've waived the fee to keep him here, because he has contributed sales tax to the city for a number of years, and now keep him here to contribute more sales tax, which God, we need in the city. So I just wanted to applaud, thank you for making a wise decision.
Thank you. Mr. Piper? Anything you have to comment on tonight?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Mrs. Geldert?
Well, I usually give you a long-winded update, and I still could tonight, but I think I'll just tell you really quick, is that last week, the State Assembly passed the two budget items, which contain the provisions for the complicated transportation funding swap proposal, and they're waiting Governor Schwarzenegger's action. One of them is basically the swap repeals, the sales tax on gasoline, but increases the excise tax, 17.3 cents, adds an annual index on it, and increases the sales tax on diesel by another 1.75 percent, and allocates 75 percent to local transit agencies, 25 percent to state transit programs. When it's all sorted out, do you get more, or do you get less? That's, that's the, the unknown, and so we're still looking at revenues allocated in 2010 and 11. The debt service, transfer transportation, 54 million, set aside for future appropriation for legislature, and it's, again, pretty complicated, like the triple flip, it's, in some of the calculations, it's more for the state.
It's called a shell game.
It very much is a shell game, but we think that, you know, there, there may be some things in there, but there, it doesn't meet certainly all the needs that we, we all have, and we're not quite sure if we're going to lose in the end, but-
Yes, we will.
We will.
That's a given.
Then California Forward, as Repair California, the major group reporting the idea of constitutional convention, is, is going to rewrite California's Byzantine conflicting and often counterproductive constitution. They're suspending their campaign, that left it to another group called California Forward, which has adopted a strategy of tackling reforms piece by piece, and so that's, they're struggling to find the money to put both those reform initiatives on the ballot, we're not sure where they are, and, but certainly, the taxpayers' initiative is, is collecting a lot of signatures, and to support the changes where there's redevelopment monies and transportation monies are not affected at cities any longer. They're still going forward with that. It's a very important piece of, to get that qualified for the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gronky?
Nothing, sir.
Mrs. Ritter?
Hello.
Mr. Campbell?
Well, Mrs. Geldert's point, that this will bring more money to transit, because that's better than zero, which is where we were going, and have been experiencing, even though the State Supreme Court says they should restore that money to us, I, I'm not holding my breath.
Mr. Lopez? Okay, this meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.